Between O V S and ripping out a hill, this is almost the likelihood. You're not necessarily going to see it, so that's why we come out here and look on the phone. I'll just check it out, but I'm gonna check it as well. It is. It should be there. Okay. It didn't change for me. I had to wander across because I'd already opened it. I guess that's why, okay. But she says it's there, so I trust her. It's working. We just can't, you cannot go by this. You can't see it. It won't show up. I don't know why. It's been that way forever. But it's, it's working, so we're good to go. That's it for now. Until we start the actual meeting. And then, you know, I'm just gonna go over and talk about that before. Here, I can go grab one.
No ma'am, it's fine.
There's not much on it.
I see that.
Hey, Lydia worked hard on that agenda.
It's very, it's very well written.
It's well written. It's just.
As always.
It's short.
It's short.
Unlike this one.
You ready, Sees? I would like to call to order the September sixteenth, twenty twenty-five Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting. Roll call, please.
Yes, sir. Chad Kleckler.
Here.
Daniel Turner.
Here.
Cassie Hollinshead.
Here.
Amanda Kelly.
Here.
Randy Humphrey.
Here.
Miles McQuary.
Here.
And Serena Watson. We have a quorum.
You will please stand and join me in prayer. Heavenly Father, thank you for this day. Thank you for this time that we can gather here. Be with us now as we enter into this meeting. Guide us and direct us as we conduct business for the city of White House. Christ's name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now the Texas pledge.
On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one individual.
Thank you. Please be seated. Okay, that takes us to item D on our agenda, community interest.
Commissioners, we have two new employees here with us tonight. I don't know if everyone knows, but I have transitioned into a new role. I am no longer the Planning and Zoning Director. I've transitioned over to the Economic Development Director. Jake Hootier is our new Development Director, but he just started last Wednesday, so I am still somewhat filling that role. We're, we're in the process of learning. So this is Jake, and you'll start seeing him more and more. And then Lydia Lopez is our Permit Tech. She will basically start the role that I'm playing right now. She'll, she'll be the one to take the minutes and run, help run the meetings. Jake will do what Leslie's doing, helping with the, the presentation that we have. And then, of course, he'll be presenting the items. So that's our introduction of our new employees. Ms. Black, would you like to give us an update on City Center renovations?
Sure. So after some delays and issues we were working through on the flooring and the slab over at City Center, the flooring is mostly in, and so I anticipate that they will start delivering and moving in furniture in the next week or two, which is a really exciting step in this very long renovation process. And so we are planning to do a grand opening in early November. So we'll be sharing more information as that date becomes a little firmer.
Yay. And then the other item I wanted to bring to your attention is the Police Department is working on a National Night Out. That's become a great event. We've done, I think, this will be our fourth or fifth time now, and they get a little bit bigger and better every time. We'll have hot dogs. I'm assuming they'll have the same, probably the same DJ. Do we know? Have DJ. It'll be a great time over here in the park, get to know the police officers, and just hang out with your friends and family. It, that will be October the seventh, and I believe it's from five to eight.
Five to seven.
Five to seven. That is all that I have. Do you guys have anything to add to community interest?
I do not.
In case you live under a rock and missed it, our Welcome to White House sign is back up.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, it looks great.
I did forget to add that on here. So yes, it does look really good.
Okay. All right. Then that takes us to item E, consideration of minutes. I believe all of you got your minutes in your packet. I will move to approve the minutes of the Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting on July fifteenth, twenty twenty-five.
I'll second it.
So I have a motion. I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. All right. That will take us to item F. One, public hearing, discussion, consideration, and action on rezoning requests for Mockingbird Place, Unit Two, lots fourteen through forty-four, and Track Four. A thirty point one-six plus or minus acre of land in the E Brown survey, A double oh eight seven, Smith County, Texas, from residential low density to residential medium density. Will you give us background on this, please?
Yes, sir. Well, Commissioners, before you tonight is a rezoning request from the Genaco group for a property located in the Mockingbird subdivision, as it is stated here. The request is to rezone from residential low density, R L, to residential medium density, R M. You may recall that a similar request was considered in July, but not recommended for approval. The applicant has now submitted a new application with an updated site plan. While the new plan does provide helpful context, it's important to note that the approval of the R M zoning would not be tied, again, to a specific layout, because there is no plan development component associated with this request. In addition, the applicant changed the size and location slightly of the area to be rezoned. And because of that adjustment, it affected the number of notices sent and the specific property owners who received those. Notices were published and mailed, posted in accordance with state law and city ordinances. We have received requests for information and notices of people's opinion, which we provided at your seats tonight. And we do anticipate citizen comments this evening, and I think we could have a few people here to make their voices heard.
Okay. All right. It is now six oh six P M. I'd like to close our regular meeting and open our public hearing. Okay. I'll just run down the list, kind of in the order that we received these. So Sarah Hotman. If you will just state your name and address for us prior to speaking.
My name is Sarah Hotman, N T O T T M A N, and our address is Evelyn three Red Wing Way, House, Texas. Good evening, Commissioners. We really appreciate this opportunity to speak to you tonight regarding our concerns. As I said, my name is Sarah Hotman. This is my husband, Tom. We live at eight thirteen Red Wing Way in Mockingbird Place, along with our son and our granddaughter, ages eight and eleven. We've lived there a little over a year and absolutely love the neighborhood. Our neighbors, the camaraderie we share, it's just a wonderful place to be raising a family. We're here tonight to respectfully oppose the rezoning request submitted by the Genco group to change part of our subdivision from residential low density to residential medium density. We submitted a detailed letter to each of you via email, and this request is nearly identical to the one denied just a few months ago. The only thing that's changed is the lot numbers, as you pointed out, mean acreage, not the intent, not the density, and certainly not the impact. There are no meaningful modifications, just a repackaged proposal. We reviewed the original final plot for Unit Two approved by this commission and the City Council in August of twenty twenty-two, which shows sixty point eighty-eight acres for Unit Two. While this request refers to just over thirty acres, that inconsistency, and the one before was for forty-something acres, raises serious questions about what is the long-term plan actually? Are we being shown only Phase One of a larger piecemeal rezoning effort? That's certainly possible without a planned development plan. If approved, this rezoning would fund a vast majority of the subdivision traffic through Red Wing Way, our street, directly affecting our safety and the quality of life. The H O A restrictions, which we relied on when buying our home, would be rendered meaningless. This is not just about zoning. It's about community trust. The Genco group's interest in White House is purely financial. They may develop here, but we live here. We've, we've invested not just in our home, but in our schools, our neighbors, and our long-term stability. Decisions like this must reflect the voices of those who live with the consequences, not those who walk away with the profit. We are not against growth. We are, though, against this kind of growth, growth that disregards our H O A covenants, strengthens infrastructure, and reshapes the character of our neighborhood. We urge you to uphold a low-density zoning that defines Mockingbird Place and deny the request once again. We're counting on you to protect the integrity of our community and our subdivision. Thank you.
Julie Fowler.
Hi, good evening. My name is Julie Fowler, and I live at eight oh seven Red Wing Way, White House, Texas. Good evening, members of the Planning and Zoning Commission. My name is Julie Fowler, and I live at eight oh seven Red Wing Way in Mockingbird Place community here in White House. I am speaking tonight on behalf of my family, my husband, our teenage son, and our two young adult daughters. While our home is not within two hundred feet of the proposed rezoning, it is part of Mockingbird Place, and this decision will directly affect us, our neighbors, and our community. First, I want to thank you for your service to the residents of White House. I know your role is not easy, and I truly appreciate the time, energy, and care you get to making decisions that save, shape our city. I don't know the intention behind the second application to rezone Mockingbird Place, but it appears that the only difference from the previous application is that certain lots were removed, so no current homes and residents are within two hundred feet and thus not notified. But let me be clear, just because I didn't receive a notice in the mail does not mean this rezoning won't impact my family. It will, and our voices deserve to be heard. And for the very same reasons this rezoning was unanimously rejected before, those concerns still stand today. When families like mine buy a home, we're not just buying walls and a roof. We're buying into a community, a community that is safe and stable, a small-town community where kids can ride bikes, where neighbors know each other, and where families will secure investing their lives and their futures. Up until now, Mockingbird Place has been that community. But this rezoning threatens to break the community of Mockingbird Place. This rezoning will bring more cars onto streets never meant for heavy traffic. The rezoning will put children, pedestrians, and families at greater risk. The rezoning will strain infrastructure that can't keep up, and the rezoning will change the very character of our neighborhood and of White House itself. So I ask you, who truly benefits from this rezoning? The developer, who's goal is to sell lots and make money, even if it means forcing more homes into an area never designed for it? Or the families who already live there? The people you represent, the ones who chose White House for its small-town feel, its safety and strong community values? This decision is more about than one, is more than one track of land. It's about the future of White House. Growth will come, but it must be done the right, must be the right kind of growth. Growth that strengthens what we already have, not growth that weakens it. Because once the small-town character of White House is gone, you can't get it back. And I'll close with this. The process should not be about finding loopholes or placing the burden on residents of Mockingbird Place to continually protest in order to protect their rights. It should be about listening to the people who call this community home and protecting the neighborhood we have worked so hard to build. I will stand by my neighbors and continue to protest any requests to rezone our community. Again, I thank you for your service, your time, and your commitment to the residents of White House.
Scott and Carrie Fields.
My name is Scott Fields, living one zero zero nine Christopher Street, in Enroe, last house on the left. This, our east line is going to be the west line of the proposed new neighborhood. And I know from experience that the drainage off of that pasture, or what used to be a pasture, there's a ditch behind our property line, and that's where all the water ran. The proposed mapping of that street that will be closest to our line, how are they going to do the drainage for that neighborhood? They'll have to raise that at least three and a half feet to get the water to even run towards the street off of those lots. But nobody has proposed anything to the homeowners, any, any plans of how they intend to address that kind of issue. Now, I know that all we can do is voice our opinion and ask questions, hopefully that it means something to y'all, that we already own homes there, and that we have a concern. Am I going to have to raise, try to raise my property up three and a half feet to kick the water off of it? I can't do that. My house is already built. It's on a slab. I can't jack it up. Can't do anything with it. But nobody, nobody has addressed any of that kind of stuff to us, either in writing or in this proposed map. I don't see a topo map for the proposed neighborhood that they plan on building. So who's to, who's going to police what those people do if you change the zone? Who's going to watch over there and make sure that they do what they're supposed to do? That's, that's basically my, my biggest issue is where are they going to do the water runoff? Because it'll flood our house, and I know it will several of the neighbors up my street. Because that's where, that's where the water runs now. Make three times.
Adam Brown.
Hello, everybody. Adam Brown, nine oh one Red Wing Way, White House, Texas. So we're back. We've been here before. I appreciate all of you giving up your time each and every month to serve on this. It's my understanding you don't get paid to serve on the plan zone. So as people who are giving up their time and serving this community, I hope you understand our side and our position, that we're very concerned. I was also in the neighborhood in Mockingbird with Ms. Fowler and the Hotmans in that this feels very much like a scheme, a little bait and switch, a little snake oil salesman, that they moved the lines so that they did not have to notify our community. But our community is pretty savvy, and I appreciate that, everybody. We alluded in the previous couple of speeches the intentions of Genaco. I don't want to allude any intentions. I just want to read what they stand for. And so their mission statement is to invest wisely, develop thoughtfully, and serve East Texas community. Their purpose, which is like a motto, right? Investing for the good of our people and yours. That's really interesting, because if you're serving me, and I don't want the mashed potatoes, you don't get the mashed potatoes. So I'm here, and I don't know any neighbors here that want these mashed potatoes. So I'm hoping that you guys see that, and I hope you guys love White House as much as I do. Been here twenty-six years, raised three kids through here, been at that high school for twenty years. And we don't want these mashed potatoes. So don't let it happen. We want homeowners in a residential neighborhood that we bought into. We want to build this community, and I hope that you guys will not put forward a recommendation to acknowledge this rezoning request. The previous one was fought and won, and I thank you for listening a few months back, and I just asked for the same thing, and not to let Genaco make a little extra profit when they're not concerned with serving what we want. Thank you for your time.
Vanessa.
Vanessa Catania.
Catania.
Good evening. My name is Vanessa Catania, and I live at eight eleven Blackbird Way. I first want to address some business that came up in our last meeting, and I want to thank you for listening to our heartfelt pleas a couple of months ago and again tonight. After the public hearing had closed and you were having your discussion, one of the things that came up was our H O A. And so I wanted to address that clearly here. So in the fall of two thousand and twenty-two, just a few short months after my family and I moved into Mockingbird Place, we received notification that there was a Property Owners Association over Mockingbird Place. We do not have an H O A, it's a P O A. We attended a meeting a few weeks later. We learned that the P O A was established as part of the original land purchase agreement in time. At the time, many homes in our neighborhood were still being built. Each property owner was entitled to a vote for every lot they owned. Genco was present at this meeting, and they held a majority vote by a very large margin. While the neighbors in the meeting supported potentially abolition of the P O A, we were outnumbered. Subsequently, Genco voted themselves as president of our P O A, and the other builder voted themselves as secretary. Right after that, the only remaining position was treasurer. My neighbors at the time elected me for that role. There are no, there are bylaws, but no dues, and we have not met in over eighteen months. For our neighborhood, this means that Genco still holds a majority vote for any potential changes to those bylaws, not the people who live there. This rezoning also increases the number of lots they own. The rezoning, more lots, they get more votes. So, once they sell those, those lots, that goes to the builders. The builders get those votes until finally the homeowner purchases a home, and then that vote will go to them. So, now the business side is out of the way. I wanted to talk to you about what I've really been on my heart, and I've prayed about it. I thought about it before our last meeting and again today. And every time I went to the Lord and I asked, what should I share? What part of my neighborhood do I feel like you need to hear about to understand us? And the same thing keeps coming back, our families. So let me share some wonderful things of our neighborhood family. We have celebrated the joy of new life and watched as these children in the neighborhood have grown. They've played basketball or rode bikes through the streets. In their evenings, in the early fall, the late spring, if you sit outside on the porch, you'll hear the laughter of children, the shouts of parents for kids who are going too fast on their bike. And I didn't know Texas had Fireflies. Out of Arizona, I get to watch the Fireflies. These are voices of happy families and a happy neighborhood. We have celebrated milestones like weddings, victorious football seasons, and not-so-victorious football seasons. We have seen teenagers learn to drive, ready for us, and prepare their launch into the world. We have grieved together. As a transplant to Texas from Arizona, it is new to me to feel this beautiful community outpouring in such times of sorrow. We lost a precious member of my own family only six months after we moved to Texas. And our community, they outpour to us and reached out to us. It was beautiful and unexpected. Our community has seen its fair share of sorrow in the last few years, and yet we showed up for each other. On Halloween, our children happily trick-or-treat without fear. The traffic is manageable, and we're all looking out for each other. During Christmas, our community lights up, from countdowns to Santa's arrival in front of my house, to giant snowmen wars down the street, to beautiful lights all over our neighborhood and the sounds of laughter of the children getting ready for Christmas. And when our community and the neighborhood we have all grown to love feels threatened, we shut up. Change in the zoning in our neighborhood impacts our community through its impact to the infrastructure around us, the traffic and cars on our street, the size of our classrooms, and beyond. But more importantly for me, the impact is to our home. The place our children have learned to feel safe, the place where every generation feels loved and embraced. It doesn't matter that we have different beliefs or opinions, because we are a family. It doesn't matter if I know every person in every home in my neighborhood. I know that I could knock, that my teenage daughter could knock, and we would receive a warm welcome, a hug, a cup of coffee, a conversation. This is our home, so I ask you to deny their request and preserve what we have worked so hard to achieve.
Kendra and Derek Nash.
Good evening. My name is Derek Nash. This is my wife Kendra. We live at eight one two Blackbird Way. We have three young children, from three to fourteen, that kind of give us a kind of range there.
Five to fourteen.
The gray hair, the glasses, trying to talk it off. First, I was going to say thank y'all for allowing us to speak today. After the previous outcome, I didn't think we had to be here so soon, but here we are. Just a little background about us. We moved a lot of house two thousand and eleven. Moved from Beaumont out in the country, grew up on five acres, land, grew up on a hundred acres. We moved to a little town, didn't know much about the neighborhood. I was in the old field at the time. I called the local police station and said, hey, I'm concerned buying this house. Right behind the K net area. I said, does it feel safe? I'll be gone. The guy told me, hey, I live there. I live in that area. I was thinking it's a pretty safe neighborhood, so I feel comfortable. Didn't know much about Tyler, except it was a great retirement area. So we moved to White House, and then during that time of living there, it's every man's dream to have land, cattle, things like that. And so we purchased ten acres of land, or was during the purchase of ten acres, but it was in Chapel Hill School District. My wife taught at Brown, wasn't a big deal. Our kids continued, uh, continued to go to Brown. During that time, she left Brown, went to Cumberland for a year, and then she got a job in Region Seven Education and kindergarten. Well, around those times, I mean, COVID happened, lost my job in the old field, things changed, houses going crazy. So we decided to live there, have us in twenty twenty-one. Planning on building on the land, but the construction prices never decreased. Everything kept getting higher, so we were like, pipeline had went through, had to put the pipeline, another pipeline through our land. Things would be changing, so we decided, all right, now it's time to get back to the area. We're living in a duplex near Brown, the new Brown. I want to get our kids back to the neighborhood, so they kind of grow up. So the dream of owning the land and all that, I said, you know what? I can deal with it if we find the right neighborhood. We looked at many houses, many neighborhoods, eight one two Blackbird, nice backyard, a country in the backyard. The houses were far enough apart that I could deal with neighbors that I didn't know at the time. Well, after living there for the past three years, those neighbors became our family. I mean, at nine o'clock at night, I'm getting a snake out of Lady's front yard because it's near her daughter's bedroom. Texting our neighbor, hey, you left your garage door open. That house at the end of the street, it struck by lightning twice. We're down there helping the people out. It all became a family. I can call anybody, even anybody's door, need to warn anything, not a problem. So anyway. For that said, I stand here today with my family and all my neighbors who I consider family, asking that y'all would respectfully request, reject this request to change the proposal of the zoning from low density to medium density. I'm not sure what new information that Genaco has provided that differs from any of the concerns in the past. The proposed traffic would increase traffic, the proposal would increase traffic on Christopher, which dumps out on Hagan. That's not a solution for us. Increasing the number of homes on a smaller lot is a disservice to the current residents of Mockingbird Place and disregards to the families who've already invested in White House. It appears that the priority is profit over community well-being. My father taught me that it is important to stand up for those who cannot stand for themselves. Tonight, I ask this community, this committee, to be the backbone for those of us who feel overwhelmed and unheard in this situation. Please stand up for us. My wife would like to say a few words.
Sorry. I've wasted a little week today. I had my wisdom teeth out yesterday morning, so I'm recovering. But like my husband said, we want to thank you for your time, for your service. So many of others said you don't get, you don't get paid to do this, and you don't get time, paid to get, take the time out of your day. I know Vanessa mentioned the H O A, and that was one of the concerns I wanted to bring forward, truly a P O A. But right now, there is bylaws that are in place. If you read those, they are extensive. The, the notes are very, very, very long on them, and almost every single one of them have zero to do with our neighborhood. Like, one of those bylaws is that there has to be a magn-.
Like, one of those bylaws is that there has to be a magnolia tree planted in every yard. Not one house has a magnolia tree. It also states that every garage has to be forward-facing. Side-facing, they can't be forward-facing, and I think we have two homes where that is the correct for our neighborhood. There are lots of things that weren't even well thought out when they planned that. Clearly, it's not being followed, so if we're leaning on that to say that this plan that's developed will get followed, I don't really feel like we can, because there's already so many things in place that aren't being followed in that POA. So, so many. When we look at things, we have looked at it, and we're like, this, this wasn't even thought out with our neighborhood in mind. This is probably something that got copied and pasted off the internet and put into place. None of us had the, really, the opportunity to vote on it. We have voiced our concerns on that, and they have been unheard. So that is one of my main concerns. It's just that if we're looking at that to help us maintain the quality of our neighborhood, I don't think we have a lot of backbone there. My second concern is the limited deed restrictions with this new zoning. My parents love our neighborhood, and they are seriously considering purchasing one of the new builds within our neighborhood. If this goes through, they have already said they will no longer be interested because of the damage that it will do to the property values. No one wants to spend half a million dollars in a forever home and then have a house built right down the road that's going to be detrimental to that property value. These deed restrictions, there really are none. So yes, there is a plan that is laid out, but ultimately, if we take it from low density to medium density, whoever comes in and buys those lots can do what they want to with them. They could buy four lots in a row and put duplexes on them. There's, there's not going to be, sure, there's a POA that's going to prevent that, but we've already seen that that's not really preventing anything from happening in our neighborhood currently, so I don't have a lot of faith in that. So those are my two main concerns, and then my other concern is my family. I have a beautiful little five-year-old girl over there, I have an eleven-year-old son and a fourteen-year-old son, and they play outside, they ride their bikes, they ride their scooters. Kristen's daughter and I, they love to play chalk on our sidewalks. They run up the hill, they ride bikes together. We speak with each other almost every afternoon, and I love the family environment that our neighborhood has created, and I don't want that to change. So we hope that you will hear our request and respect that. Thank you so much for your time.
Daniella Nathan Schmidt.
Hi, my name is Daniella Schmidt. This is.
Nathan.
And we live at eight one nine Red Wing Way, there in Mockingbird Place. First, thank you guys so much again for hearing this out. I know this is now the third, third time I've been up in front of y'all, and I know that some of this, well, a lot of this you will have heard from me before, so I did send in another letter. I promise I will not read all eight pages to you, but I do want to kind of just, you know, like Inigo Montoya would say in The Princess Bride, let me sum up. You have before you what is cosmetically a bit different, but is, as my neighbors have said, largely the same proposal you saw before, and like before, I'm here to ask you today to oppose and reject this rezoning from low density to medium density for this, for this lot, or plat, whatever we call it. But, you know, I can, I can hear protests, oh, you know, there, there's fewer lots, right? Now, like, now there's a, fewer lots laid out in this medium-density area. Doesn't that make it okay? Well, no, as we've said, and as, as you've heard at the start of this session, this is not a binding plan. You know, we have their good word, their good intentions, that this might be what they decide to go with, but once that change is made, then it just opens those floodgates, and anything could be built within the medium-density zoning requirements for White House, so duplexes, townhomes, all of that. My neighbors have talked a little bit about the CCNRs and the HOA, and doesn't that provide some, you know, there was a question during the last time we were here, you know, doesn't that provide some level of protection? But as my neighbors have mentioned, no, it really doesn't, because the developer controls all of that. They control through the POA, the HOA, they control the CCNRs, they could edit it and amend it, and we, at this point, don't have a vote to be able to, to control what happens in our own neighborhood, so we need, we need some, some backup on this. I want to talk a little bit about the, the breach of trust that, that my neighbors have talked about too. You know, all of us chose Mockingbird Place and our homes specifically with the understanding that the future homes, you know, we knew we were getting into a, a new neighborhood, something where there's new homes going up, you know, fairly regularly, but as we, as we looked ahead, we could see and we understood that the homes that would be built would be in like kind to what we were purchasing. So, you know, for, for my husband and I, you know, when we looked to move here, we looked at all the zoning that was on file, and we saw the plan that was, you know, as of now is still, you know, in place, showing a partial street, and we could see that the lot sizes were comparable to ours, that it was all zoned low-density, and that made us feel comfortable and safe that this was going to be a good place to raise our family. We have a three-year-old and a six-year-old, and, you know, just like everyone else, you know, our kids are out there on bikes, on scooters, you know, running around, doing chalk, you know, having a grand old time. Since we are on Red Wing, it, it is deeply concerning, you know, when I see a plan like this up there that, you know, apparently intends to turn our street into a major thoroughfare for all, for all intents and purposes. You know, something else that I mentioned in my last two times I've talked to you, we came from a medium-density community. We have lived through that. We have seen the lack of parking, we have seen the crime that comes, you know, it's just, it's statistics. When you pack more people in somewhere, you are going to end up with a bad egg or things happening, property crime, car break-ins, you know, what have you. We chose differently when we moved here, and it, it really, it feels like betrayal and a breach of trust when we see requests like this coming through to change it to something that is not at all what we understood it would be when we purchased. I do, I, I'm a little bit of an egghead, so I want to talk a little bit about the impacts on traffic flow in my letter. I put a few diagrams in there based on this plan and based on the previous, the two thousand and twenty-two parcel layout that was, that is, comes up on the city of White, I believe it's the city of White House's website. And just speak a little bit to the traffic flow. This, this plan that they have put together creates like a rabbit moron or a little ant farm of cul-de-sacs reaching back, which, you know, in addition with having the houses much closer together, that's going to increase parking problems, it's going to increase emergency response time, trying to get an ambulance, you know, roaring up Hagan, up Red Wing, turning right, turning left, turning right again to get where it needs to go. In the original plan for the neighborhood, it was a very elegant layout where you actually had Blackbird and Red Wing running in parallel to each other all the way to the back. You had a few split-offs that would pull some of that traffic away from those major thoroughfares, and so it really was a lovely, balanced traffic plan, and this that is being proposed is just terrible, frankly. There's the potential for traffic choke points, as I said, delays in, in getting emergency services in place in, you know, in the event, I mean, hopefully not, but you know, if there were ever to be an emergency evacuation, you were going to have cars choking up right there on Red Wing where they're all meeting together to try and escape. It's, it's just, it's dreadful. And I know that there's the potential for a stubout happening onto Christopher, but you can see in that plan, that does not show that street traveling all the way through. So maybe it would happen, maybe not. Lastly, I do, I do want to talk a little bit to the point that the developer had made during the last hearing, where they had talked about how they felt there was a better market for homes that were smaller and lower-priced, and I, I just want to point out that we have, when we were here that last time, there were three homes for sale in Mockingbird Place. Those have all sold. Now there are three brand-new, well, there are two brand-new homes for sale and one resale home for sale right now. So there is a demand for what is currently selling. Homes are being built, they are selling. If you go onto redwing.com, like I did on Saturday, and you look for homes in like the four hundred to four hundred and fifty-dollar, thousand-dollar range, you will find that there's six homes in White House city limits right now. Three of those are within Mockingbird Place. That's comparable to what it was back in, in June, when we spoke last. However, back in June, if you look at like the three hundred, four hundred band, there was thirty-five homes. Right now, there's about forty-six, I believe, forty-five, forty-six. So there is a bigger glut of homes at the lower price point. There is less supply, but consistent demand for the homes at the higher price point where we are at. So I just want to make that, make that point. You know, when it comes to, to, we don't have to worry about homes being built in kind with, with what should be there, but our homes are, because they're going to sell. Just, just people like us want to live in a place like this, a place that's shared by my neighbors. So in closing, I just do want to say, you know, like, like everyone else has said, you know, this development company, they don't live here in this neighborhood. They don't, they won't be dealing with the ramifications of this plan or whatever similar thing they decide to, to put into place in the case of if they were to win this rezoning, but we do. You know, my, my kids, you know, it's, it's our, it's our kids' safety. It's, it's just, it's how we, we saw what the neighborhood is when we moved here. We saw it as a promise for how it would be, and, and so, once again, I just ask that you reject this change in zoning. Thank you so much again for your time, and I much appreciate it.
Kristen Harden Siegler.
Sigler. How are you?
Good.
Good evening. My name is Kristen Harden Siegler, and I live at eight ten Blackbird Way. I first want to thank this committee for hearing our concerns about rezoning our neighborhood and for honoring our wishes and our concerns by previously denying Jennaco's request to rezonate in July of this year. And yet, here we are again. For the third time in four months, to request that you once more deny the rezoning proposition submitted by Jennaco that would change the zoning of Mockingbird Place from residential low-density to residential medium-density. I will not focus on the data and concerns that my husband previously and my neighbors today shared with this body, including case studies in comparable Texas towns like Tom Hall, and concerns for infrastructure, safety, property value, and the like, not because they aren't still pertinent, they absolutely are, but because nothing has changed. Jennaco simply moved the goalposts to get around requirements to notify the neighborhood in hopes that we wouldn't show up, but here we are. Instead, I will focus on a personal thing. My family moved to White House in two thousand and twenty-three into what we hope to be our forever home. While we understand it was a, understood then it was a developing neighborhood, and that living here would come with growing pains, we never imagined to have to fight such a blatant money grab, the proposed plan simply put profit over people, and that does not sit right with me, it does not sit right with my family. Times are hard, interest rates are high, grocery and gas prices are astronomical, and our community has been hit hard by unprecedented times in the last five years. Still, we choose White House as our home for the people, for the sense of community and for our deep-rooted pride in being an East Texan. As an East Texan, we stand with our own regardless of circumstance, beliefs, or corporate creed. We will continue to show up, no matter how inconvenient, because it's what's right. Because of this, my family, my neighbors, and myself once again implore you to deny Jennaco's egregious rezoning plans, because you are East Texans, and you too know what's right. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Real.
My name is Ben Real. I am the residential project manager for Jennaco. I guess I'm the boogeyman, but. So, do you have the facing slide? Make sure. All right, so the original plan back in July was to bring one hundred and seventy-six lots to this development. Today, we bring in one hundred and fifty-one. We are trying to listen to the community, trying to do what we can to make it profitable, yet listen to the community and do what's best for the community. The original zoning was for forty-plus acres, plus or minus. Now we're asking for thirty, leaving the ten that is already zoned, R L, to stay that. Not, we can do that tomorrow, we don't have to change anything. The new plan that you see here breaks up the development in three phases, with the total street build-out in a perfect market in four years. Therefore, we are not trying to dump one hundred and fifty-one homes onto the community in a year. Realistically, with current market and everything else, you're looking at six, seven years on a perfect market for this thing to be built out with homes, with bodies indoors. Who knows what's going to happen to Hagan Road? More homes, more tax base allows the community, allows the city to improve the streets. This is, this is about zoning, this is not about the streets. The new plan allows for greater separation between the smaller houses and the bigger houses. Now, the last plan that we showed in July had the smaller houses and the bigger houses facing each other. I, I'm literally the guy that sits in the office that draws these plans, so I, I tried to make where the smaller houses don't share a street, they share a fence line to keep the different aspects of the community, of the, of the subdivision separated out the way that I believe they, the way they bought the house. I did not realize, not like I said, I'm literally the guy that draws these, these streets. I did not realize the two-hundred-foot thing was going to be, that was not part of the effort to, to certainly admit any kind of, any kind of letters, letters to get put out. That was not my ideas whatsoever. So sorry if anybody got offended by that. New plan allows for better connectivity for the city and eases the street stress onto Hagan by exiting the Mockingbird. You don't have to, you don't have to exit Mockingbird Place through Mockingbird. That total build-out, you'd be able to go to the west and jump on, on Christopher, which the city of, city of White House already has the right-of-way. The previous developer that had this board didn't have to build it because he never got that far. It also shows connectivity to the empty land to the east. We'll feature build right out to Cowpash here, who knows what's going to be in ten, fifteen years. We don't currently, I don't know, take the Hagan's over. To address the drainage situation, we have those studies, all the drainage goes to the east and down to the corner of that last bottom pole, second C on the screen. Well, it, it may not now, but once we put stormwater in. Last thing, the, there was discussion on street parking and that being unsafe for children in the neighborhood. As being a father of two young girls, I appreciate your concerns. I cannot find any ordinance, anything restricting street parking. However, there is an HOA there, which, which is in place, and the homeowners can vote, settle restrictions on street parking. Currently, Jennaco has no votes, has no lots, therefore we have no votes in the HOA, so it's up to the homeowners to amend the restrictions if they don't like street parking, and it's up to them to, to do that. We are, we are here to help if they want help on the process of doing that, we're definitely here to help. After we get, if this goes, goes through and rezones, we're here to hear the community concerns, be part of the HOA again, and we can do all these restriction changes on street parking and not allow them. Also, last meeting, there was some discussions about going into medium-density and crime. Again, with HOA, in the restrictions, we can put in the restrictions that the Aspen owner identified. We can not do, you do non-short-term rentals like Airbnb's and RBOs, which helps on the crimes aspect. Bottom line is, is that we are a local community. I was born and raised in White House miles, I went to school with you, K through twelve, so we have twenty-five employees, we all live. So, uh, we have twenty-five employees, we all live in the greater Tyler area. I believe we have four of them that actually have kids go to White House ISD. So we're not the boogeyman, we're not from Austin, we're not from Dallas, we're from Houston, we're not from out of state. We're from Tyler, we live in the Tyler area, White House is the Tyler area. Uh, in Mockingbird Place, we have the opportunity to take what's once a defined project from some investors that could not finish the project and actually build it out. The Jinnicoe group wants to grow, but wants to protect and enhance the investment of the current homeowners that make, that currently live there and may want to live there. We believe as a company that allowing the zoning change allows us to build out the best, the rest of the subdivision out with a mixture of products that economics of home building require now. Currently, home pricing dictates that the same buyer that bought before back in, back in twenty twenty-one, uh, in the front section of Mockingbird has now has to downsize in order to get to the desirable neighborhood of Mockingbird Place. We do that, this is, will allow subdivision to grow in the same manner that it has, but in a way that's sustainable for years to come. We are committed to the neighborhood, to this neighborhood and project, but we have to be profitable. The current zoning is not conducive to make that happen. We ask the commission to allow this change that in the community trusts us and that we are truly trying to do what we think is best for the White House community and for Jinnicoe. And I'm happy to answer any questions about that.
All right, it is... I'm going to close the public hearing.
Okay, I was just going to say, do you want to ask one more time if there's anyone else who would like to speak?
Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Can I just add a comment?
Go ahead.
We can't take questions or answer anything while, during the public hearing.
Thank you all for giving us a chance to speak to you. Um, I'm Jim Ledoux, my wife and I, we live at eight oh nine Blackbird Way, in the Mockingbird Place area. And when we bought the home, we specified specifically was not to have an HOA. We were told it did not have an HOA. My wife's cousin also bought from the same street we did and she was told the same thing, there was no HOA. Suddenly, a month and a half after we moved in, this is two years ago, we started getting papers showing us that we're in HOA. To me, that was fraud, simply totally fraud. And I have no confidence in Jinnicoe or any of the builders they pick anymore because I don't know what they represent. And we're sitting in the middle of limbo right now on this HOA thing to begin with. Because here we are, you know, they say you're supposed to have a meeting once a year. I haven't seen one. So are we in an HOA or not? These guys are running a show that just has no rules to it and they just seem to be changing as they go on. And frankly, I'm livid about this. I bought this place, I've got great neighbors, great friends, we all work together as a community, and this garbage goes on. And I'm sorry, but I am upset about this and it's about time somebody cleaned this mess up. Because going with this type of plan now, we have no idea where they're going with it. And I think therefore most of us are about, we're very uncomfortable with the changes they're making and where they're taking it. Okay, thank you.
Vanessa Katana, eight eleven Blackbird Way. I just wanted to add some supplemental information. I was scrolling through my emails so I could give you some names. The president of record, according to my documentation, is Trey Brewer, who is an employee of Jinnicoe. That's all I have, thank you.
It is now six fifty-two and I'd like to, we're going to close the public hearing and move back into our regular meeting. Okay. All right, we've heard a lot of, uh, information. And, uh, does anybody have any questions or, uh, based upon the rezoning request that we have sitting in front of us?
I'd like to ask, Mr. Real, have you all prepared any studies or had any third-party engineering of any sort um, as to what the new zoning, um, you know, taking it to residential medium would do to the infrastructure along Hagan Road? Because, you know, as, as we all know, those of us that have lived here a number of years, um, you know, Hagan Road is, has been taxed. I mean, it's just heavily traveled and, you know, we all know, no, no secret there. But, a- and I don't know, Leslie, if we have any, um, you know, any kind of documentation or anything that shows what that would, you know, what kind of footprint, what kind of impact that would have, um, you know, for our infrastructure?
We don't, as the city do not have any traffic impact analysis for what that would do to Hagan Road, no sir.
Okay.
Wait, we, we don't?
So no studies have been done?
If it's not required, probably we'll do it, so.
Okay. All right, do you have any else? Do you have any questions? Casey, you don't. Daniel?
No, not, not anything additional from the last meeting.
From the last meeting?
Yeah.
You got any questions or anything? Randy, any more questions?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, I don't have any additional questions. So, anybody, so since we don't have any additional questions, I will entertain a motion.
I don't have a verbiage in front of me, but...
I do. I'll motion to deny the recommendation of the rezoning request from residential low density to residential medium density for the property located in Mockingbird Place, unit two, lots fourteen through forty-four and tract four for their consideration.
Okay.
I will second.
So I have a motion, I have a second, and, uh, roll call vote, please.
Okay, Mals McCrary?
Hi.
That's four?
Four.
Four denial, okay.
Four deny, that's correct.
This is weird. Uh, Randy Humphrey?
Four.
Amanda Kelly?
Four.
Cassie Hollington?
Four.
Dana Turner?
Four.
Chuck Leck.
Four. Okay, so motion to deny recommendation of rezoning request from residential low density to residential medium density for the property located at Markingbird Place, unit two, lots fourteen through forty-four and tract four, uh, for their consideration. It's been, how do I approve? It, the, yes, it's been approved to deny the recommendation.
Yeah, it's backwards. And just like last time, um, as it stands right now, this will not go before city council next week unless the developer gets a, um, a request in to me in the next, probably really need it tomorrow or at least by Thursday, the, an appeal. If they wish to appeal, it needs to come to me and, um, then that would go before city council.
So one other thing that I will add, there are some changes to the way city councils post agendas. We are required to post our city council agenda first thing tomorrow for our next Tuesday's meeting. And so you may or may not see an item on the agenda for this particular thing, but the council will not hear it unless it is appealed in a timely enough fashion for us to hear that on Tuesday. We have most of your email addresses and we'll keep you posted, the email, if that works for you, on whether or not you appeal this way or see. We'll do our best to communicate that information out in an equal way. State legislature just made our posting requirement. There you go. Thank you.
Okay. All right, then, uh, that takes us to item G, the administrative reports.
Yes. Could you give me just a second? Takes a second, please, to get that brought over. Reports are, the report is pretty much cut and paste from last month. Not that much of a difference. Mr. Hall is finishing up his last phase, so there, there's a few houses, um, going in there. Um, Mr. Conaway, they are bringing online.
Uh, we're, we're trying to finish our meeting.
Um, we're, um, Conaway will begin bringing their new houses. I'll wait until everybody gets out.
They're moving out.
Okay, sorry, I'm not very loud, but I'll try. Um, Conaway should be bringing on their new houses, um, for the Villas and Park Meadows. Um, phase three, I think, I believe it's phase three, should be starting soon. Um, they'll be starting in on that infrastructure, they've just been released, I believe it's for phase two. So we should start to see some houses in, in that particular phase. It, it's the phase that they brought in, um, to go along with, with the new subdivision. It's still the part that is right behind, uh, Mary Lane, that older part of the, of a previous subdivision that they had purchased. Um, so hopefully we'll see some increase in our numbers soon. But I mean, we're, we're, I think we're holding steady at this point.
We should see a little dip in interest rates here in the next thirty days, so that might help just a little bit.
Yeah, yeah, I would agree with that, so. All right. Anything else? Leslie, you got anything else?
I don't believe so.
Okay, all right, then that will take us to item H.
I'll move adjourned.
All right, second. I have a motion and a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hear none, we are adjourned.